Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carl Sarachi. My name is Eric Bernstein. I'm the attorney for the Planning Board for the Township of Hillsborough. This is the reorganization meeting for Thursday, January 13th, 2022, at what is now 7:05 PM. I call this meeting to order. Start with a little salute to the flag. Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
You all have got to learn to do the salute the way everybody else does, which is broken.
All right.
Like Zoom. This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice has been communicated to the Hillsborough Beacon, The Courier-News, The Township Clerk, posted on the township website at https://hillsborough nj.civicclerk.com/ and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex in accordance with the public meeting notice. The next order of business, this is swear in four members of the board. That would be the mayor for Class 1, Mr. Wagner for Class 2, Committeeman Delkor for Class 3, and Ms. Smith in alternate number 2. So if you would, all four. Soon as I sign your line. It's too easy. Signing your line, Mark. I state your name.
I, Frank Delkor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
The office of.
Fill in whatever seat or class you are.
Planning Board, Seat Number 3.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome, Ms. Smith of the Board.
Thank you.
Everybody else hasn't learned their lesson. Slowly, would you roll call? Roll call.
I got you.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Mayor Lepani?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Delkor?
Here.
Mr. Piesin?
Here.
Mr. Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Julian is absent. Mr. Sandra Mina is absent. Mr. Scoville?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
We're here.
Mr. Sessa?
Here.
Mr. Gerstes?
Here.
And Mr. Maske?
Here.
The next order of business, ladies and gentlemen, is the selection of a chairman for this board for 2022. I'll entertain motions.
Counselor, I'd like to nominate for Chair Mr. Sarachi.
Is there a second?
Second.
You want it? What? Okay. I'll watch you now when I go. Are there any other nominations for Chair other than Carl Sarachi? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close nominations?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we do a roll call for Chair?
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Let's call Mr. Sarachi to go for himself.
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
It is all yours, Carl. Congratulations. Carl and I'll swear.
You guys do the thing.
The end around?
It's like a Hershey wrap.
They weren't sure it was you.
You're official.
I'm official.
I'll take a picture and we'll send them out.
First, thank you all for bringing me back one more time. Welcome, Ms. Smith. Looking forward to working with you. And Mr. Mayor, didn't get a chance to say congratulations on the night of rework, but congratulations on being reappointed.
Thank you, and you also.
Yeah. Okay. So next up is election of a vice chair. So open floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Neil Julian for vice chair. I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, make a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Well, when Neil says it, that's what happens, Neil, when you didn't show, so. No, but congratulations, Neil, for coming back and being vice chair. Next, we will entertain nominations for secretary.
Anyone? I'll nominate Ken Hashtag.
I'll second.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for secretary? It's gonna be how long it took for the first one. I doubt there's gonna be anymore. So all in favor of the close nominations for secretary? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, welcome back. Okay. So next, resolution ratifying the fair and open selection process. I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, thank you. Next is resolution appointing the board attorney. Seems like for most of the positions that we had up here, we have only one proposal. So it's Mr. Bernstein, so motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Yes. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Okay, welcome back, Eric.
Chairman, I'd like to thank the board for what is now my 22nd consecutive appointment to be the board attorney, which means either you all haven't figured it out or I haven't figured it out either. Thank you again, and we really look forward to another year of excitement here at the board.
I'd like to know what year this picture was taken.
By bar mitzvah.
I think we're all guilty of that. Okay, next, resolution appointing board engineer through fair and open proposals. We have four. So Eric, would it just be appropriate just to have open up?
Somebody wants to make a motion for one of the four.
Okay.
I'll make the motion for Panoni Associates. Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Okay, welcome back, Jerome. Excellent. Next, resolution appointing an alternate board engineer through fair and open proposal process. We have three proposals. So they're listed in front of us. Open up for nomination.
David, we usually have more than one alternate just for.
We have, yeah, we do one, two at a time, perhaps.
Yeah, I thought so. Do we have to nominate both or one at a time? Or?
Well, you could do them both.
Make a package, too.
Dominate CME and I think it was, we have last year. Do you remember? Was it Carol?
Carol.
Carol.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that dual nomination?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other additional nominations? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
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 Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Chigarelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, resolution appointing board reporter through the non-fair and open proposal. We have one proposal, which is Michael again. Any one nominating?
Michael's not here to say anything, so guess we'll nominate Michael. It's a package. It's like a sundae.
It's like a variety pack.
I'd make a motion for Ms. Lombardozzi. Second.
Okay, any additional? There aren't any to choose from, so roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I enjoyed coming down.
We enjoy having you here.
We enjoy having you come. Yeah.
So good. My next favorite appointment, we all see. I know we struggle on this one. Appointment of the Master Plan Subcommittee. I believe it's five members. Four.
You don't wanna form.
Right.
That's true.
Everybody run away.
Let's see Neil, Nathan.
It was Neil and Rob. I think it was myself. I think we're possibly right. I was on it.
Yes.
So we got yourself.
Probably.
Neil.
Yep.
Rob. Frank, you want?
Yeah, well, I guess I guess.
I'll start. John Chigarelli and myself.
So which one of you would be an alternate?
You need one more addition?
Well, I think if it's gonna be the four, five of you.
Four plus an alternate.
Four, okay.
Is that four plus an alternate?
No.
Three and an alternate.
Four is fine.
Four is?
I thought I heard five at one point.
Mr. Julian, Mr. Piesin, myself, Mr. Chigarelli.
You're leaving Chair off?
He chose. He can be the alternate in case one of us can't make it.
Somebody, I believe that's the Chair's appointment.
Yeah.
So the Chair is appointing the mayor.
Mr. Piesin, Mr. Julian.
The chairman, who is not here.
Right.
And Mr. Chigarelli.
Yeah.
So you need a motion, so that's the appointment.
That's the appointment. Good. You look like you're guilty.
Whatever they look at me.
You weren't sharing whatever you were eating.
I want chocolate.
You got one over there.
I have an open this one.
Okay. Next, resolution adopting the rules of order. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, resolution designating the official newspapers. May I have a motion? I believe it's the Beacon and Courier-News?
Yes. They're still both around. I make a motion, Beacon and Courier-News.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Okay, resolution fixing charge for notice of meetings. May I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, resolution setting schedule of meetings for the year. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution of open meetings policy?
Chairman, I'll move that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is, would this be a time to address, for lack of a better word, time limits? For those, I know the township adopted something, a three-minute time limit, which is something that the board is doing. Is this a place where we might address that? Or is that? Just bringing?
I'm just gonna defer to her.
The answer is yes.
Okay. So what did the township do?
Three minutes.
You guys put three minutes?
Was it?
My only... The, I think that's fine for open comment. I don't see how that's possible if someone's questioning testimony.
Comments not on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. But for testimony, you can't limit that, in my opinion.
Right. And I think it was three minutes per person as opposed to you've got time to say something, go to the back of the line if there's a big crowd. So I don't, you know, we're kind of getting in the weeds here, but I know what we wanna, what we're trying to do.
Nice.
Let everybody have a chance to move things forward.
I mean, I'm fine with that. If someone wants to amend it and maybe...
Maybe five minutes, because some things may be a little more technical in the planning board rather than something that's maybe a little more vanilla for town committee. Maybe give them five and three seems a little, maybe a little tight. I don't know. Board's considerations, is my opinion.
Yeah, I like the idea of a limit, right? It could be five, even seven, but, you know, something like that. And then just that round. And then they can go back, like John said, come back again after everybody gets a chance.
Mr. Chairman? Right now, just for the board's edification, the committee's policy is a three-minute, one-time, no second chances. Now granted, the committee does have two public portions. One option is to go to a five-minute situation for the planning board, one time. And it's then, if the board wants to give somebody a second chance, that's up to the discretion of the Chair. But otherwise, the easiest way to avoid that problem is the one-time, five-minute, come on up. This is all you got.
But only during open sessions?
Only during the business from, not from the agenda portion. Not for testimony, not for objection, just for that.
Well, for at the end of the...
No, you don't have an end.
Well, we just open it up for the public to come up.
Comments on the application.
On the application. You really, you have one public portion that's not application-related.
Right. Okay. So five minutes on the items that are not on the agenda, five-minute limit.
So I'll rescind my second and add that.
All right, because those of you who have the resolution in front of you. We would be amending number three, that at each public meeting of the planning board, meaning the first and second Thursday of each month, any person wishing to address the board on matters not on the agenda may do so during a time in the meeting listed as business from the floor for matters not on the agenda, on the agenda, to a limit of five minutes.
At one time.
At one time for comment only. And that would also be the same for 4B, which relates to your business meetings. Who made the motion?
David, were you gonna say something?
No, I think I clarified.
John had made it. We're good.
No, I brought it up, but I don't remember who made it.
Who made the motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion. For the record.
Okay.
And I'll second with that clarification. Yep, thanks.
Okay, so before we go vote, any last comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Yes.
From a procedural point of view, I would suggest he's gonna hate this. Mr. Maske, keep the time. keep the time.
Somebody with an egg timer?
That's what I was gonna say.
Stiften.
Stiften.
Yes.
One, fire.
Mississippi, two Mississippi.
Me? Me can borrow from the school board, they used to have that thing, they used to-
It was an egg timer.
Yes, they, they used to time me in all the time, so.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, resolution of administrative procedures. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any comments? Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mayor Leponti.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Committee man Delcor.
Yes.
Mr. Pison.
Yes.
Chairman Serati.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Giugirelli.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. Thank you, and we've come to the conclusion of our reorganization meeting, so we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll be back in about five to six minutes.
Good morning, and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biandi Route 206 bypass here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here. Can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer. As we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biandi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delcor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kip Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biandi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake, and please help me welcome Ms. Joan Biandi. Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biandi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the township committee, mayor, freeholder, and assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough. His tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why the 2013, in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biandi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development. Not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but will also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our township master plan. This long-awaited, a much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s, as the Hillsborough Township began to develop, unfortunately, it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, somewhere where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end, and from Animal Road, Somerset County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day, and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning. We will now have the official ribbon-cutting, and that will conclude our ceremony. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biandi, and thank you very much. One, two, three.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponti, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms-
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic Machanick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Machanick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first planning, Hillsborough Planning Board regular meeting of 2022. Actually, again, January 13th, 2022. I have a salute to the flag. Boy, I'm already out of order.
Let me give just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting has been communicated to the Hillsborough Beacon, the Courier News, the Township Clerk, Procent of Township's website, and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and professionals, please.
Mayor Leponti.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Committee man Delcor.
Here. Here. Here.
Mr. Julink is absent, Mr. Centurion is absent, Mr. Scobbo.
Yes, here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Mr. Giugirelli.
Here.
And Miss Smith.
Here.
Mr. De Sessa.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Maske.
Here.
Okay, and you're here.
Don't forget yourself.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask that after the meeting minutes that the board take a matter out of order, and that would be the application issue?
Okay. So first up, we have consideration of meeting minutes, the meeting minutes of December 3rd, and that should be 2021?
No, 2020.
2020? Okay.
I had it double-checked out myself.
No, no, no. Well, I just assumed because I'm still writing my checks, it's 2021, so.
The eligible members, you have Mr. Pison, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Giugirelli, Committeeman Delcor, and Mayor Leponti.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing done, roll call please.
Committee man Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor Leponti.
Yes.
Mr. Pison.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Giugirelli.
Yes.
Thank you, and as Mr. Bernstein had requested, that will go slightly out of order and will take up the application we have on the schedule this evening, Harvard Way.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, this is Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC, Redcom/SAI, File 21 PB09 MSPV, Time of Decision 013122, Block 58, Lot 1.09, Route 206, also known as Harvard Way, applicant seeking a preliminary final major site plan approval, C-bolt variances, and waivers to construct a 107,366 square foot warehouse and associated improvements at the end of Harvard Way on property in the I-3 light industrial zone. Environmental Commission review on September 13th, 2021. The first hearing on this application was November 20, 18th, 2021. I'll have counsel introduce.
Good, good evening, members of the board. Michael O'Grady, Savo Shaw, Priscilla Gillespie, O'Grady and Fisher, on behalf of the applicant, Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC. Unfortunately, this morning, longtime friend and resident Mike Ford came down with serious illness, and he indicated that he was unable to participate in tonight's hearing. We also had a similar email from Ed Cook, our environmental expert. So we're asking for an adjournment based upon the severity of Mr. Ford's COVID-like symptoms. We thought it would be obviously inappropriate to proceed tonight with a potential positive COVID witness on behalf of the applicant. So we would respectfully request that it be carried, and certainly will execute a time of decision extension form through March 31st, 2022. And we're requesting that without further notice, as was indicated and approved by the board at the November 18th, 2021 hearing.
Any thoughts?
David, you got a timeline for him to get?
Sure. The next available meeting would be February 10th, but it would be shared, we do have a minor subdivision on that night. No major variances, it's a subdividing one lot into two for the construction of a single-family home, that's February 10th. February 3rd is the return of the enclave at Royst Brook, so that's a full night. The next meeting would be March 3rd, and then March 10th. We have possibilities, but nobody's been scheduled to those meetings yet.
We'd be happy with February 10th, soon as possible. We only have our architect and Mr. Ford kind of going out of the order as a general, but yeah, we, we think we could probably finish the application.
So you would go second? You would go second, obviously?
Yeah, sure, understood.
I'd make a motion to-
I'm assuming before everybody hears, while we hear Mr. Ash, who is here this evening, you use the standing mic rather than the-
Good thing. Jordan Ash, Ash Legal, represent the objector on this application, Green Hills Community. I take no position on the adjournment request, gentleman is sick, and that's understandable. We just received their request later this afternoon, so I'm only down here, so my engineers here already, or anything like that. For the date of the 10th, I am currently available. I would like to make everybody aware, my wife is due with her second child on the 17th, so we're kind of cutting things close, and I will make everybody aware as soon as I go more than that, that is what I currently have.
Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Mr. Ash, will your, any of your experts be available that evening?
Yeah, as of right now, our engineers available for that evening.
Okay. So what was it, February 10th?
February 10th. The motion is to carry this application without further notice to February 10th, 2022, at 7:30 or soon thereafter. As the matter may be heard, this will be the second application on the agenda that evening.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, any additional discussion, comments? Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Leponti.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Committee man Delcor.
Yes.
Mr. Pison.
Yes.
Chairman Serati.
Yes.
I recuse myself. You're staying.
You're staying.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Giugirelli.
I'm abstaining also.
And Miss Smith. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We can now return Mr. Chairman back to the regular order of business.
Thank you. So we do not have any resolutions for consideration. There is a planning board business item, Mr. Maske, the draft of the 2021 Planning Board Annual Report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is your annual report, it's basically a compilation of all the activities performed by the board over the last year.
Okay. Anything of note to highlight?
No, sir.
Okay. So do we approve a final copy at the next meeting, or we can do it tonight? Okay. So I'm just gonna open up to see if anyone has any comments on the report before we take a vote to finalize it? I had it right in here who the subcommittee was last year. We did have five, didn't we?
I knew, I saw it somewhere.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, any final comments, discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mayor Leponti.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Committee man Delcor.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Serati.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Giugirelli.
Yes.
Miss Smith.
Great. I just want to note, the mayor had the best attendance.
Can't say I didn't duck any of my response.
No, you did not. Next business from the floor for matters not on the agenda, and Susan, you weren't here for the reorg, but we set up a new five-minute rule. No, no.
It was for everybody.
It's for everybody, that's right. We just want to make sure everyone gets a chance, so. And you can't thank the five minutes. Oh, trust me, I, I, I remember being asked for that, or transferred to anybody else. I was, people would say, I'll give, give my time to someone.
You're not like C. Span, I'm not, you cannot transfer your time to another speaker.
No.
Can't yield, right?
Can't yield to your colleague. To your colleague.
It's a non-transferable asset. All right, next, we do not have any consideration of ordinances. So with that, just to remind everyone, we do have a meeting on January 27th.
That's the business meeting, if you want to cancel it, now would be the time to do it.
Okay, so it doesn't seem like we have any business, so motion to cancel the 27th.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, the canceled meeting.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's January 27th.
So then our next meeting is February 3rd.
3rd.
We're the first and second.
I just have one more item, if I could, before you adjourn.
Sure.
All right. You should have received either on Civic Clerk or directly a memo from myself outlining a new document distribution policy that we're gonna install this year, so for now, you'll still be getting things in paper, but in order to save time and paper, et cetera, we're going to go to an all remote or all, yes, Civic Clerk process. So, you know, unless we get a very specific request for a hard copy of something, everything will be put up on Civic Clerk. Now what we'll do for the meetings will be similar to what the township committee does. Each of you will have a Chromebook at the dais, so you can access Civic Clerk, and we'll go from there. We'll, we'll kind of transfer into this if need be, we could have one of the guys from IT come to a meeting and give you a little tutorial. Obviously, the mayor and Mr. Delcor know how to use the Chromebooks, and Carl, you do as well, I'm sure you, you were having them when you were on.
The original Chromebooks were like, you know, that big.
Yeah, so we will have a Chromebook for everybody, if, if anybody needs any orientation to that, we, we will provide that, but we'll kind of go into it somewhat gradually, but eventually it will be all on Civic Clerk, again, unless there's a specific request. We will continue most likely to give the 11 by 17 copy of the, the larger site plans, so it's easier to read, but other than that, you know, letters, reports, eight and a half by 11 stuff would be on Civic Clerk, which you all have access to now, so. But we'll move on that in, over the next month or so.
Township attorney is asking for a hard copy.
Over there?
Township attorney's asking for a hard copy.
Board attorney, now that's-
That's 25 cents a page for the board attorney.
Five, five cents a page, according to the rules.
Very well done, it's about time, thank you.
Excellent.
So it's one less Chromebook you have to buy, David.
Okay, so.
No, page token, five cents, one side, five cents for the other.
Yes. Actually, seven for the first five of the five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you.